Please.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Today is Friday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at nine AM. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. I'm going to now kick it over to Luanne to read the governor's notice regarding this being a virtual meeting.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen, and the governor's March thirty-first. Imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the town's Free Town, Town of Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to view this meeting will be able to view the meeting, post-meeting recording on youtube.com/freetownma or freetownma.gov/freecam. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post the town to the pound's YouTube channel or audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
All right, thank you, Luanne.
Welcome.
Okay. So Agenda Item One, this is whether to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for submissions on from from two twenty-two, twenty twenty-three at eight AM through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, eleven AM. Any discussion on this?
No. If we have discussion.
This is, uh, yeah, normal protocol, right? We've got to open the warrant.
Yep.
All right.
Yes, pretty straightforward.
Without all intention of motion to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for submissions from two twenty-two, twenty twenty-three at AM through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, eleven AM.
I second that motion.
Are you, you make the motion?
Make, motion made.
All second and all in favor? Aye.
Selectman Loops?
I think he might be frozen.
Uh-oh.
Just give it a second.
Yeah, it does look frozen.
Does look frozen.
Or he's standing very still.
That's a skill. I don't know. Oh, Jared is trying to get in as well, so let me look him in.
Hey, Jared.
Morning.
Carlos is frozen, so we're waiting to try to see if he can get back on.
We've, we've opened the meeting, Jared. We are recording. I guess if we have two, we have a quorum now.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll redo the motion since Jared was not here. This is, we're just on Agenda Item One. So I'll adjourn motion to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for submission to twenty-two, twenty twenty-three at eight AM through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three at eleven AM. Will you make that motion? Nope, now we have more technical difficulties.
It's connecting to audio.
All right, sorry, guys. I was having some technical difficulties there.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna restart, so I'm gonna make a motion, or I'm gonna entertain a motion for the, for Agenda Item One.
I won't see the motion. Wait, you just, I'm sorry, I have.
Yeah, so I'll do it, I'll do it again, don't worry. So I'll entertain a motion to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for submission from two twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to AM through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three at eleven AM.
Motion made.
All second it, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, great. Number, Gen Item Two. Are the applications for snowplow for the winter twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three season? We have Bobby Amaral, Amaral and Heath Chase. Luanne and Debbie, all their paperwork has been submitted and.
Yes.
Is good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following applications for snowplow for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season. That's Bobby Amaral and Heath Chase.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, Gen Item Three, we have the Senior Workoff Program, which will run from January first to October thirty-first. Any comments on this?
No.
No.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the dates for the Senior Workoff Program, January first to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
All second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Um. Gen Item Four is a quote for the insurance of the old police station. And that is on page twenty-four.
Yeah, I think it's roughly three thousand dollars to insure the building. Uh, we did try to get a bigger deductible to see if it would reduce the cost. Uh, I asked them to do a five thousand dollar deductible, uh, but it was only a hundred dollars cheaper. It wasn't worth it.
Okay. I got the wrong minutes up here, hold on. Um, I, I have my meeting notes open from last time. Here we go.
Tell, welcome back.
All right.
Sorry about that. Looks like my Roomba pushed my Wi-Fi off.
Oh, geez.
So fantastic.
All right, no problem. It was perfect timing because Jared logged on as soon as you logged off, so we had a quorum.
Excellent.
All right, welcome back.
Um, thank you.
So, yeah, so the premium through Maya, right?
The total would be three thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents if we exclude the terrorism.
Okay, and I, we don't need the terrorism, I don't think. For the food.
Let's hope not.
Okay.
We have other problems if we have terrorism.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
All right, so with that, um, all entertaining motion to approve the quote for the insurance on the old police station from Cabot Risk.
Motion made. Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, thank you. Um, okay, moving on. This is, uh, Gen Item Five, to approve the agreement to the Town of Free Town and Institute for Human Centered Design. And this one.
So this is a contract for the ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan, which we got a grant to do. So the contract, but this will all be paid for by a grant.
Okay.
And this will go to each town building and assess it for, um, for ADA compliance and create a report. And then once this report is done, um, we can apply for grants in future years to do projects to make things ADA compliant. It also even looks at our open space, our port of pasture, our beach, our boat, not the boat ramp because that state, but our, so, you know, we can maybe put different accommodations down the line at those places.
That makes a lot of sense, and I think it's definitely needed, so I'm, uh, I'm all on board with this. Any other discussion on this?
No, no.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Free Town and Institute for Human Centered Design.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Moving on, Gen Item Six, this is the agreement between the Town of Free Town and Greenman Peterson. Uh, GPI for Engineer Services for the South Main Street Bridge. We know that bridge is a issue.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is just, um, I think it's thirty-eight thousand dollars. This is to start the study for the bridge to determine what needs to be done to fix the issues. Um, I was not able to get any state or funding for this. Chuck from the highway, the highway surveyor has agreed to use um, chapter ninety funds to pay for this.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm, hopefully, once we kind of get this assessment, potentially, if there is a big, you know, some, hopefully, we can get some state money down the road. Is that a fair kind of, uh, plan of attack?
Honestly, you know, I'm, I'm always trying, but this one's extremely difficult because we cannot make it Mastiot compliant because of the width.
So they probably don't want to touch it with a ten-foot pole.
Mastiot or any state funds is going to be extremely difficult for us to get for that bridge. Uh, so I'm not going to tell you. I think this one, we're going to have to take it on the chin. We're just going to have to pay. The estimate is roughly one point eight to two million dollars, just so you have a
Yeah.
a sense, um, looking at this year's budgets and determining whether we can, maybe, maybe we can start putting some money away.
And that estimate, Debbie, is that to, what is that to do exactly? To replace the existing?
So that will be the overlay that, like we did on the one on Elm Street, right?
Put the cover over the top, so to speak, yeah.
Yeah. But the study will, will give, will look at all the options and give you sort of like a feasibility study like we do for buildings, right? It's going to look at all the options and say, uh, to overlay it, here's the pros and cons, here's the cost to replace it. I don't know if it's possible, here's what that would be and what the cost, because don't forget with all of this, it means we, uh, close the road. So there's a piece of this, it's about time, how much time, build a new bridge there will take forever, whereas to do the overlay, uh, Chuck, I should have had him come on, but he thinks it'd be about three, three months to closure. So something that we could do between, say, June and September when the school buses aren't running.
So, yeah. Now, I know you mentioned, we can't get the bridge, we, uh, Mastiot certified, but is there any kind of opportunity for federal money? Or is that?
That would probably be similar, but you know, I'm always, you know, there are infrastructure bills out there. I will continue to look. Victoria from planning is well aware of the bridge. There was some serpent meeting yesterday, which unfortunately had double meetings, so I couldn't go, but she went about transportation and what our needs were, and she was sure to mention that. Um, so we're putting the word out there that we are going to need this funding for this bridge. It's going to have to take place, so I will continue to pave the pavement. Like I said, Victoria's on board and aware. Um, one of the things, I mean, we may be able to go a different route, sometimes with the MVP, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, which was done, I think, back in two thousand seventeen, if they uh, take some of these things and say it's, we're vulnerable, because if we have a flood, that that bridge is going to get washed out or move or whatever, we may get funding indirectly that way.
Okay.
Um, we're, we just got a grant for Hazard Mitigation Plan, a new Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is similar to an MVP plan. So the more times we say that this is an issue for the town, which it is, the more, the more likely we can get funding from different sources.
Yeah, that makes, I mean, I just, you know, we've seen all the kind of hazardous disasters taking place in the news, like, you know, I, uh, I want to make sure that we're trying to get ahead of this as much as possible, because I can see that becoming, you know, that's a a waterway underneath it, that, and also, you know, we have a lot of trucks going through town, so.
It would be, it would be very detrimental if that bridge went out unexpectedly, and it wasn't a planned closure, which is why I am trying to get ahead of it when it was brought to my attention and I read the reports. I'm still waiting for the Mastiot's latest report from October of two thousand and twenty-two. I guess they do them biannually, but they don't give you the reports for some time to see if that's moved. Um, because, you know, there's a crack in it, and if it, if it's stable at the moment, if it begins to move, then we have to move quicker than we're anticipating at this point in time.
Makes sense. All right, thank you very much. All right, so, and we did not vote on this yet, right? So, um, I'll entertain a motion to.
One second, let me add to that real quick, Trevor. So back in twenty-ten, when the bridge did shut down, we had to use alternate routes. You know, we had some issues logistically. Is it smart of us now to contact KP Law? So looking at all the logistics, see what the legal hurdles are going to be. Once this bridge is, let's say, we move forward with replacing the bridge, it's not going to take a week, it's going to probably take, you know, a month or two. Uh, we need to get traffic, a hundred thousand vehicles through that area, so there are a couple of options. One, you know, might easier than the other, but we need to have all options available. I think it might be prudent of us to contact our council to make sure that we have all our options in place and get any potential legal fights out of the way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like, firmly, like, we might have to take something through eminent domains, that kind of what we're.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, not that we want to, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an intimate domain, it'd be more like an easement, in a sense. But at the same time, let's just get that conversation going, if not out of the way, uh, make sure all parties are understanding of what's going on. It's a temporary solution to fix the issue. Um, that way, we have, we're being proactive and having a plan in place versus, you know, something happening and us scrambling to try to figure it out.
Yeah, I actually like to play a little bit. That makes sense to me. Any other discussion on that? All right, so, I mean, I'll add that to the motion, kind of, uh, just have uh, town administrator kind of contact KP Law and get the ball rolling on this.
Yeah.
We'll take care of it.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the group, um, between the Town of Free Town and GPI for Engineering Services for the South Main Street Bridge, as well as have, um, town administrator reach out to KP Law to, uh, initiate conversations regarding, um, you know, legal hurdles for, um, potential new routes around the bridge.
I'll make the motion. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Good, good, good catch there, Luanne. I totally forgot about the roll call for a second. All right, moving on, so Gen Item Seven. Uh, now, this is the next three are just, or two are just to have town administrator, um, sign documents on our behalf. The town's behalf.
Number seven, eight, and nine.
Seven, eight, nine, so the next three. Only had one coffee so far today. Um, I could probably, I'm going to combine these into, into one motion, is that okay?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Okay, so I'm going to initiate a motion, uh, to have the interim town administrator sign off on the agreements between Town of Free Town and GPI. The, uh, documents regarding ensuring the old police station, as well as the, uh, agreement uh, between the Town of Free Town and Institute for Human Centered Design.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, Gen Item Ten, this is, um, application to put a trailer at eleven Pleasant Street due to a fire. Um, I'm sorry to hear about that fire. And um, I have no issues with this, obviously. And do we have a time period? Just, I know sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
The application states that they want to place it on two twenty-two of this year, and it will be gone in a year, two twenty-two, twenty-four. We did reach out and let them know that we were meeting today as opposed to the twenty-first, so that we could say that if they wanted to do it today, um, would probably be good.
I can, I'll do it for today. Um, okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application, uh, put a house trailer at eleven Pleasant Street due to a fire, um, effective two seventeen, twenty twenty-three, and, um, ending two seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Uh, next, I'll entertain a motion to have the interim town administrator sign off and documents related to the trailer for eleven Pleasant Street.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so Gen Item Twelve and Thirteen, they're both related to, um, reserve funds for, to, one to Old Colony, one to Bristol County, um, Bristol County Agricultural School, so I, both these related to, I guess the first one, Old Colony is for uh, transportation as well, and this is just our assessments were below expected for both of them.
Debbie, you're on mute?
Yep.
All right, um, they don't give us the bills until like October of the, the year, so we, we, obviously during budget season, we do our best to get them as close as possible, but we're short on both of them.
Yep, I think, I mean, this is, this is nothing new. Um. Yeah, so the total for Old Colony was like four hundred and fifty thousand. And for Bristol Aggie, is it seventy-three thousand, or is it, so it's, is it half of the, uh, I see, like, I'm looking at the notes here. Looks like the total assessment was one hundred forty-seven thousand.
Correct.
Right.
We pay it into two.
Payments.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so I mean, as a percentage, you know, the, 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 this additional amount isn't, you know, astronomical by any means. So our guesses weren't that bad, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little, you know, Bristol Aggie just put that big addition, but they're, you know, they're they're regional, so the cost is spread over a wide uh, amount of towns, but it's hard for us to know where we're going with that.
Yeah. Okay. All right, with that, uh, any discussion on this?
No, good thinking.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to do two separate motions for this one. So I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from transfer from the Reserve Fund to the Old Colony School Assessment Transportation in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, now is for the Bristol County Agricultural School Assessment, so I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the request for transfer from the Reserve Fund to Bristol County Agricultural School Assessment in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion made. Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, so I think that completes our agenda.
Yes.
Um, any old business we want to bring up?
Um, the only thing I can think of is the only thing you can update for town buildings is the red building with the the tape and the, uh, the sign that the hazard sign up front, uh, maybe that someone's watching, they want to know what's going on there. Maybe Deb can throw, give us two minutes on it.
Yeah.
Update everybody.
So, as you know, that's, that's something that I think it, we have to address sooner than later, so with, uh, Carl Bizarro, the Building Commissioner, I've asked him to, what was needed to get a demolition permit, if in fact we went that route. I know that from, you know, my experience, you just don't decide to demolish a building and get it done. It requires asbestos reporting. It requires, um, uh, rodent mitigation. So I thought, hey, we should check to see if there's asbestos, because that also will drive the cost of demolition, if in fact that's the route that we choose to go, or the, you know, that the board chooses to go. So he went over there. Nobody that I know of has been in that building for fifteen years, so he, um, poked around in there, um, took some pictures, and you know, it's in really bad shape. So, uh, we did get an asbestos, uh, contractor in there. I haven't gotten the results yet. We will know sooner or later. But in doing so, we realized there's standing water in the crawl space, quite a bit of it. The bulkhead wasn't boarded up. Um, it's, it's not safe, so I asked him to put some no trespass signs and board up the bulkhead so that it would be safe, you know, nobody would just get in it. So he went over and put caution tape and the orange sign, so, um, that's where we're at. I apologize, I, I didn't, uh, let you guys know that was going on, but at this point, I'm just trying to lay the groundwork for decisions to be made in the future about what's going to happen with that building. I did let Mary Brown know from the Historical Society that that was happening, just so that I knew that would cause angst amongst the Historical Commission. So, um, at this point, we're just trying to understand where we're at, so that you can make decisions moving forward with that building.
Yeah, and I'll tell you where I think my head's at with this is just to mitigate the financial and just potential legal risks to the town. I, I see if we could sell, auction off that property with, with, uh, stipulations that it has to be, you know, raised within six months or three months or something of that nature, and also has, when it's rebuilt, if and when it's rebuilt, it has to meet, you know, some kind of historic, uh, at least like the facade has to, has to, you know, match the character of the town. I, I'm not sure exactly how we articulate that, but I think that makes a lot more sense than us, the town itself, paying to, to do all that, when at the end of the day, we have no need for that, that property, right?
Um, so I have talked to town council about, and I, I'm not sure that I'm not going to say a hundred percent agree with his, his, what he has told me, but I said, what if we sell it with a deed restriction? Because what you want is a deed restriction, that the front elevation has to look similar to what's there today.
Exactly.
And he said, we have to go to town meeting to do that. I don't, I don't know that to be true, but I'm, I'm prepared to do that at the next town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, so, say if there was no deed restriction, if we just sold the building, right? Like, would we still have to go to town meeting? I'll tell you, based on some of the other, you know, events at town meeting where we tried to do something about this kind of area, it was, it was voted down. Um, and that makes me nervous, you know?
I think that him and I disagree. I feel like it was a tax-taking.
Yep.
Even though it was thirty years ago, it's still a tax-taking, and the treasurer has the right to auction it off. That does not add a deed restriction to it, but she has the right because it was a tax title. He says, I think, I don't know, because it's probably been owned for so long that we have to go through town meeting. I, I, I can pressure him a little bit more, because we know in the past, sometimes him and I something, this lost, something lost in the translation, so I will try again. But, um, I feel like she owns it through tax title, and it can be auctioned like any other tax title property.
Yeah, I mean, and I know this was tried, there was an attempt to tax settle this in the past, and it fell through because the town wanted to, the board felt that they wanted to recoup all the back taxes. Um, I think that ship has sailed. Um, and, and I, I, I really, you know, I mean, I shouldn't say this publicly, but I really just don't want that building anymore.
Well, it's going to cost us, probably, and it will definitely cost the town more to demolish it than a private citizen.
That's, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Everything else we have to do.
And also, don't, don't forget as well, that building doesn't have any type of septic or, uh, anything. That's one of the reasons why we, we wanted that side lot.
I know.
So if we put a deed restriction and try to sell it, we, we can't sell it, I believe, because there's no way to put a bathroom or sewage or anything, it's, it's it, it's tough. Literally storage.
Yeah, the way I view that, though, is that, you know, we, we know that the property next door is owned by a, a private citizen, so it, you know, that, that, then the ball's in their court to, you know, if that person wants to buy this building, or whoever buys that building wants to buy that other property that we attempted to buy, then, then that's, that's out of our hands. And, you know, they can make it work. Right, right now, we're not in a position as a town to, to do anything productive with those two spaces, but it's been proven, unfortunately. We tried to, just didn't work out.
Yeah, so I just feel like we can't continue to kick the can with this. We, the decision needs to be made, because it's.
It's uninsured, that's my biggest problem. Right, is that, is that we have a dangerous building that's uninsured, and there's nothing, we've tried to do something about it, and, and, and we can't seem to get it done, you know, so our hands are kind of tied here.
How was Mary in the Historic Society in regards to you saying what you said to her?
Mary was, I didn't talk to the whole society. I did talk to Mary. She, she understood. I think they understand. I mean, the roof fell in, the roof fell in. I mean, I don't know how many years ago the roof fell in, but it wasn't yesterday. So I think she's aware that, I think it's sad. I mean, it is sad, right? It is what it is, but it is what it is. It's been thirty years the town hasn't chose to do anything with that building. Um, I don't know, you know, so I'm just, I can't sit in here and look at it and good conscience say, oh, well, just keep kicking that can. At some point, we are going to need to do something about it, and I'm just trying to lay the groundwork for the board to decide.
Yeah.
What's.
And I think that, I, I appreciate that, Debbie. I think we should, we should get a decision in front of the board, you know, sooner than later.
Yeah, I think it actually, it might have been on this, uh, Tuesday's agenda, but because we canceled the meeting, so it's probably on the eighth. So it is in front, it will be in front of you. I'm just trying to gather as much information as I can.
And the one thing I'll add to that is, like, if we, you know, if the board, if we decide as a board to try to sell it with, with, uh, a covenant, and it doesn't fall through, and that, it doesn't sell, which I think is a possibility, then we can go forward with, you know, taking it down ourselves, which, but I'd like to have at least, you know, yeah, whatever, whatever is the least impact to the town financially.
Right, exactly. And, you know, this is all the planner in me, right? Like, I want to be ready for whatever may come our way, and that's just like the bridge. I can't wait until it's an emergency. That's not how I operate. I need, need all of the information laid out. I need, need all of the information laid out. So that we don't have these crises, it's, we're never funded for a crisis, the town does never have a pocket of money that says, hey. Got this emergency, we need to just throw two million dollars at it, we don't have it, so I'm trying to plan. And give you guys everything to make a good decision, so yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction there.
Yeah, I agree, and to piggyback off you, Deb, I I've spoken with Mary as well, and she understands, you know, the condition of the building and everything that's going on. So although she's, you know, she wants to see it, you know, flourish, she understands that the building is beyond its time. It's, it's time to make a change, so we should be okay in that end.
Alright, great, alright, I think with that, we're all set here?
Yes.
Okay, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, alright, have a great day, everybody, great weekend. Thank you.